Hello, everybody. I'm late, so I'll be back out later. Thanks. All right, guys, how's the audio? Can y'all hear well on the audio? Hopefully, I don't lose you in the elevator. Good morning, everybody. I'm hoping the audio is good. Okay, good. What? I don't answer questions. What's up?
Well, I need to know if you can't go ahead. If you're carrying, all I need to see is your license to carry and you're good to go. You can go in if you got your license.
Do you suspect me of illegally carrying? What is your deal? Oh, George, that's the name I needed for my lawsuit. Sergeant George, what's your badge number? Sergeant?
What you're carrying today?
What's your badge number, Sergeant? What is your badge number, Sergeant?
Do you have your LTC on you?
Come over here.
What is your badge number?
Come over here, sir.
What? Don't touch me! Do not, do not fucking tou- do not fucking touch me! Get your hands, get your hands off of me! I'm not breaking any laws, motherfucker!
Hey, that's, all we need to see is license.
That's all you've gotta fucking see, so get, let me go! You know I've got a license to carry anyway!
You have to show it.
You know I've got one! Yes. There you go, thuggery. Fucking, you guys are the reasons why. Was it Joss that just assaulted me? You realize you assaulted me for no reason because it's in there that I can't carry, not out here.
That's all I need to see. You're good to go.
I know I'm good to go. I don't break the law. You do.
It starts with the morning. Next up is a recognition of the 2024 Leadership Development Program participants. For all of you who are here today, and I'll tell you how many of you are here today. As I call your thing, CJ. And forgive me if I don't get it right.
Look at this. Look what they did. Must've opened my shirt.
Rashar Carrie. Jessica Correia. Melissa Carroll. Mahadi Capitalwada. Ashley Fletcher. Patricia Gamboa. Felicia Guerrero. LaChandra Hallman. Jayne Hartley. Brian Pollers. Nikki Jones. Marian Lannick. Twyla Lee. Mark Lukey. Caitlin Malik. Mitchell Bolinar. Sergio Munoz. Ian Patterson. Hunter Trotter. Jacob Wilson. Iris Yang. Susan Young. And Daisy Zamora. Congratulations and thank you.
You can clap if it's for their people. You can't clap for another reason.
If there's anything we have to vote on, thank you for doing this, and we appreciate your attention. Next up, we have our consent agenda. The motions to approve the consent agenda has been discussed. Any discussion on the consent agenda?
Yeah, I'm gonna come back. Oh, go ahead. I'm coming back in. What's your full name? And what's your badge number?
I'm gonna tell you that.
Yeah, what's your badge number?
I'm gonna tell you that.
Why not?
We don't have badge numbers, by the way.
Oh, you don't? Okay, what's your first name?
Joss.
Your first name for the lawsuit.
All I need is Joss.
J-A-U-S-S. So you're not gonna give me your first name? Okay. That's the guy that assaulted me. Where's the other one at? Who was that? What was the, the?
Sorry, George.
George? Okay, y'all don't have badge numbers?
No.
Okay.
In the South Florida State Subdivision, pages 1, 2, 3, 4, increasing line. That's a public hearing. Now, now open the public hearing. I do not have anyone selected to speak to this item, or if anyone wishes to speak on this item. All right, seeing none, but if the motion is opposed, the public hearing. Motion second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Not just next to vote.
Check out the worthy honors.
Uh, next up is.
Oh, ten. Okay.
Move to approve. I have a motion in the second. Any discussion on this? Mark, the next year. Passage in am. I remain to take consideration to submit a courtment to head of the Department of Commerce to the Texas Commission on Fire Protection regarding the newly appointed fire marshal. Motion second on this item. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. Please pass your votes. All right, passage in. Very delicious, Mr. Wilson. And, uh, Mr. Wilson, please stand. Let us recognize you. Welcome aboard. I know you are a witness for welcome aboard. Here, David, passing. You have yes, please.
Our justice, my lord.
My love, thank you for having us having. All right, next up is consideration to adopt the Tarrant County Department policy. Move to approve. And we have a motion in the second to approve this item. Any discussion?
Yes. So. We've all heard that the, uh, uh, power tends to corrupt. And athletes power corrupts. There are two major checks and balances. Transparency. And the first is. This court's court policy places way too much discretion on.
No, I've got my gun. Nothing was taken.
And it discourages freedom of speech with the barrier of inconvenience. In this policy, the timeline is at the discretion of the judge. The legal end is at the discretion of the judge. The judge, of the judge. I am not okay with this. And leadership, any member of this court, could be okay with this. This allows suppression of voices under the guise of the order. The public is not able to practice. I've gotten lots of calls this morning. Or should I increase that as a part of our campaign? For the, for the first. The timeline needs to be a little longer. For three minutes, can we not sit here and let officials? And here, while they will take it on work, let their children, if they're home, taking care of their parents, whatever. Can we not sit here? And for three minutes, listen to the people that elected us? To these very nice man jobs we have? We can sit here and listen to that?
Why move on there?
And, and even this, uh, discretion. We are asking constituents to, um, the day before, and just wait until then. And then come back to this day and see. Now, and do all work on, uh, registration. But there are some people who cannot register online or direct access to the PC. So, for those who are in the jury, and who want to speak, we're asking them to take two days out of their lives to come up here and participate in a process that should be very accessible to them. And thirdly. In this policy, constituents place their precinct information on these forms. And Judge O'Haire has the authority to decide who speaks in what order. That is not okay with me. I appreciate all the folks that have reached out to me. I appreciate all the folks that are here, um, to speak to this and to discuss this. But finally, in this policy, the bailiffs can criminally trespass anyone from this building without any permission from a court member or staff. This does not allow any checks and balances. That should be for anyone. So, again, no commissioner on this court should be okay with this at all. It takes control from every member of this court. Suddenly suppresses the wishes of you guys, who are leaving and places power. So, we can make it to one person. I did get input into this. I provided input to county staff. I don't see a bit of it in the damn policy. Um, so. You can tell he's in control. And you can tell he believes the power. And you can tell that county staff is terrified of him. And so, this is what you get. But just know that I, before you all even contacted me, I was opposed to this. And so, um, I stand with you. I'm just interested in what's in that.
That is literally some of the most ridiculous stuff I've ever heard of. I am currently the presiding officer. There are statutory powers and authorities that come with that. I have had, I've been here two years. I received a pile of papers every morning as they scattered and moved to get it to us all and make seven copies of it. I have never taken a single person out of order, except for two times when two elected officials asked. One was Royce West, one was Bo French. And I allowed those to come up because they said they had conflict. I don't intend to ever move the order. I'm sitting here running me and looking through this while you all sit here. I've never pulled one out, stuck it under, but you have the same order that I have. The idea that, that this is run by me, all five people have feedback. And I realize it's difficult for you to understand, you're not in the majority on the court. And so. Our county administrator does not work for each one individually. Our county administrator works for the court as a whole. And they take feedback, they put together the best thing they can put together based on feedback. And the notion that county staff is terrified is the silliest thing I've ever heard of in my lifetime. I believe I run a fair meeting. It's strict when it comes to yelling out. I will continue to run a fair meeting. This is not designed to somehow give me the ability to pull some fast one. I'm a firm believer in free speech. Free speech is not the ability to disrupt a meeting anytime you want to disrupt a meeting. It is not the ability to scream out. And the United States Senate, the United States House, the City of Fort Worth, the County of Dallas, the Texas House of Representatives, the Texas Senate, all have policies and procedures in place to keep people from yelling out. And then the notion that this policy creates the ability for law enforcement to enforce laws is also ludicrous. We don't have the authority or power to give law enforcement powers or take law enforcement powers away. What they choose to do when it comes to enforcing laws is up to them. And that separation of powers that you're concerned about, uh, would actually be violated. If we tried to tell them who you can prosecute, who you can't prosecute, who you can arrest, who you can't arrest. I have never told anyone from the sheriff's office to arrest someone or do anything other than remove them from this proceeding when they speak out. So, I will continue to do that, which is my right to do, whether this policy is passed or not.
Can I ask a question? Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Simmons, I'm new to this, so if this is out of order, let me know. But I, I practice constitutional law, so I take that very seriously, especially on free speech issues. You had said that it violates the First Amendment. Can you tell me where are the rules? What the violation is of the First Amendment? Because we are violating the First Amendment. I don't want to sign off on it. But I didn't see anything in those rules that did that. So if you can show me where it violates the First Amendment, that would be very helpful.
Like I said, there are subtleties, but to me, they're not subtleties. When you prevent or you direct barriers for people to speak, that is the violation. So, coming down the day before, signing up, having this been timed out two or three days to come and speak, then, then.
Okay. So, so you're saying there's things you definitely disagree with in the policy that to you raise serious red flags, but not necessarily a violation of constitutional law? Am I understanding that correctly?
There are things in this policy that bring red flags. You got it?
Okay, okay.
All right, in terms of. And in terms of, if there's anyone that doesn't have the ability to sign up online, you can call my office. And unless this prop, this policy prohibits it, we will sign you up. So, if you call my office, no matter who you are, what party you're from, whether you support me or support me, we won't check, we won't know, we won't care. If you call my office because you can't get to a computer prior to whatever the time thing is, which I did not, but in here, by the way. But if you, if you call our office, we'll sign you up. Anytime I word that we will do that, as long as you call us before 5:00 P.M. You call us at 4:59, we make the cutoff. If you call us at 5:00, we'll sign you up.
In addition, this policy does not address things like, um, weapons in, um, this. It does not address things like, is that podium accessible? Um, so this, this policy lacks in fairness.
I, I would agree that the policy is not perfect. But I will say this, I think that consistency matters. The adage policies matter, so the substance is out there. If we want to change the substance, or you want to perfect it, uh, we'll go with the board. But I do think the public deserves policies. They deserve to know what to expect, um, on, on any given meeting. On, on the timeline side, what I've heard from a lot of people is that the meetings run all day long. They have to take the entire day off. And so, that was almost a key factor to get more people to be able to speed it up. If you limit that, no matter how else to do that, sort of people don't have to take the entire day off of work to come make their choices. But, but again, I think that there are things that, that the judge speaks on that are absolutely true. Almost everything in here is best memorialized. The authorities that he has as the elected best officer. I didn't see any, any air of overreach by county judge. You could do any one of those things right now in this court at any given time. Make an exception to any rule, the vote three, at any given time. You know, so it's just, I, I don't, maybe I'm just not passionate about policy or substance. Uh, I just think the public deserves to know what the policy is, and that's for everything that happens in this county. What you did was pull something up and say, how does this work in court? And you have, and you have to help. They, they deserve a policy, courts deserve a policy. Substance to me, you have to really define. The issue that's had in the policy in general is just what I agree with, wasn't in the public person.
So, the policy, I'll tell you, I, I think I was the first one on this court to urge a policy after, um, the judge, um, kicked out, um, Jim Johnson the first time. I couldn't admit it to that part, you know, before I called Mr. Crackfield and asked how is this court in development? Is there a policy? And he said, no, it's something I want to. And I was just. And so my staff got policy from Travis Downey. I agree. I'd be the first one that wrote the, the topic of G D that's going on. And so, uh, the others that I had on, and the others, um, are asked with, um, hand over, turn over power to the county judge. There are, um, actions that we can take as a court with the motion. If he wanted to pick out the Johnson speakers, he can make a motion to not do that. And so, that, none of that is worth taking. So, it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean the policy, which I advocated for, was the first one. Uh, and it needs to be contemplated.
I, I'll say during my 10 years in the Texas House, I sat on several committees, some chaired by Republicans, some chaired by Democrats. They all, as the presiding officer, wielded this exact same power and authority. They were all able to cut off debate when they wanted to. They were all able to take weaknesses out of, uh, control if they wanted to. They were all able to do things, as Commissioner Rivera said, by virtue of being that presiding officer. There were times when the chair, it was not in the chair, in the vice chair, but in the other different party set in the chair. They were in agreement with the, uh, powers of the presiding officer as well. They could take things out of work, they could limit discussion. So, I don't really feel like there's anything in this policy that is overbroad and overreach. It's just basically what the powers of the presiding officer are, which, again, I'm sincere. If there's something in here that violates a constitutional provision, please let me know. But I take that very seriously. I just do not see that in this policy.
And, um, I'm not going to say house, but I'm in the world of organizations. And the chair cannot cut debate. If, if, there has been much of a problem, um, that's how that works.
Well, I think, I think you're right on with that motion for the body to alter. If the court as a whole, three votes controls what heard about opposition and government. So, even if, uh, Sutser Edford said, hey, you're concerned, you're concerned with the policy. It outlines expectations. The judge says, I'm saying he has to do this. He looks, can't go against the policy. Well, there, with, with several exceptions, though, and that is, we don't have the powers of court to say, Matt, you're no longer the road bridge for your precinct. That's, we, we've decided, three votes, you're not, sorry. You cannot legally do that. And there's certain things when it comes to the legal presiding officer, you can't just take the rights apart. Uh, I've said this before, I'll say it again. I will not collect the digits for any statutory power given to me, to never lose it. And I will not advocate to gain additional powers that the state law does not provide. But I take that very seriously. All right, any other comments from here before we go speakers? All right, first speaker on this is Ronald Baker, following Mr. Stewart. Matthew Mucker.
Congress showing no more respect in the establishment of a religion of protecting the freedoms out there for original freedom of speech for the press or the right of the people peacefully assembled to petition the government for redress of grievances. It doesn't say it has to be nice, it doesn't say it has to be clean and concise. That's why we have 1776 because of issues like this. We should be able to speak. And history is, is not a long time, but you know, that's what we established, and I'm gonna take with that. But if you want to, you know, forget too many speakers here, it is what it is. That's what we pay off. This is what our taxes pay off. You can sit here and listen to this. Obviously, doesn't make it right. Sorry, it doesn't make it right. You may, you know, one policy just only makes you feel good, but it doesn't make it right. That's all we have to the Constitution. That's our.
They can't.
But if you want to continue to give one man power, one person power, one woman power, no matter what they are, you're gonna win too much, and you're stepping online. Thank you.
Following Mr. Mucker, we have Joe Paul.
Members of court, excuse me. I was not aware that this was on the agenda this morning, so I don't have any prepared statements. My primary concern here is that, as others have, have said, the, the right to petition government for redress of grievances is a constitutionally tried right. In my experience addressing boards such as the court and other government agencies, three minutes usually is the bare minimum amount of time necessary to get an argument and to present it in a convincing manner. I think it would be doing the public the greatest service if you had arbitrarily changed the amount of time this speaker had with the observation notes. I can't write a freedom of speech, show up to the court and say, oh, there's only two minutes on the clock. Now I have to decide what to cut and how to begin my argument, um, while I, I got pen and paper on my lap here. So, I, I am not aware of any other elements of the proposed, uh, policies. But I caution you to, to think very carefully before you make something like changing amount of time that you have. Without any precaution notice, as I said, it'd be three minutes, bare minimum, unnecessary. And as Commissioner Simmons mentioned, right, it is your job to listen to your constituents. Right? It is your job to sit there, no matter how many people have signed up. It is your job to listen to our arguments as we exercise our right to address our government. So, those are the only comments I have. As I said, no prepared statement. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Following Mr. Palmer, we have Charles Lewis.
I'm pretty excited to be in a meeting. I'm looking for a good America before I leave this country. I think we ought to get one. I think one of the qualities of good leadership, matching the scope of response to that issue. These proposals, these proposed rule changes are way out of scope. In fact, there was no problem of any kind during the last meeting, except for the violent removal of three attendings. Incidentally, either the professor or Manuel Mata were coming up that the online system is having been arrested, and no bond amount was indicated through the next day. Were they actually arrested? Were they unarrested? When we remove people from meetings against their will, who have broken no laws, what does that mean about us? Since these are being proposed now, I have to think that they are arising from the last meeting. The first gentleman who was removed at the last meeting was correct. Section 551007 of the Local Government Code enables any member of the public to address the body on any agenda, either before or during, if the body's considered to be in consideration of that item. Somebody signed up to speak on proclamations. He was denied that right. Imagine getting violently removed from a public meeting and or arrested in America for simply asking why the law is not being followed. Where did these proposed rules changes come from? I think we know that by now. Where did you first receive them? You had input. That answered my question. Where did you first receive them? You had input. That answered my question. Your input was simple. What does it sound like? These proposals give too much autonomous power to the county judge. They're also intimidating. It will certainly discourage people from coming to these meetings and speaking freely. Again, there was no problem at the last meeting. It appears that your response to loved ones becoming scared for their family and friends' safety in the jail is to extend that fear to affect their attendance at these meetings. Before this whole thing went down, I would ask a sensible approach would be to be extra accommodating, consolating and grading community, assuring them that you see a problem and are willing to resolve it. It's ironic that coming to rightfully express outrage about the jailness could itself land you in jail. It doesn't look good, in my opinion, as a conservative activist, to shut down speech by implementing these unnecessarily strict rules. You aren't responding to what the people want by implementing these rules. They did not come from us. Nobody asked for this. The people want you spending time focusing on the jail, not on coming up with reasons to kick people out of meetings they paid for. Commissioner Kraus would like to address your question about the constitutionality. It does address Congress. It says, Congress shall make no law. I believe that the constitutional argument here is the spirit of the Constitution. The spirit of what guys like Mr. Graves fought for, is that being followed, is that being adhered to. You have the ability, and one last point, if these things are inevitable, if he has this power and you don't need to vote on it, why are you voting on it? You have the ability to make a decision here. No autonomous authority, not one more party in the county judge. It is dispersed among the county commissioners. If not, you can all just go home and ask him to find your bridges and stuff. Thank you.
Following Mr. Bills, we have the ring dagger.
Okay, there's a few issues on this, but as far as the order of people speaking, I don't really have a problem with that. Somebody at the length of this order, if it's anybody, they ask politely, can they please be interlaced because they have a conflict. I'm sure you're okay with letting them wouldn't speak. But the, having someone come in and sign up five o'clock the previous day, it has never been a problem that I've seen. I know one time that there was like a bunch of people sticking in and wanted to speak and they weren't, you know, the papers weren't ready. I remember that. That was, that was like a one time thing, you know, I don't think that that's really an issue that needs to be fixed. Having it like nine, nine thirty this morning, they give copies out plenty of time. So I don't see any need to change that. But what I do think as far as maybe not constitutional, but you know, I've spoken at the city council, I've spoken at the support of ISD. They all have a three minute set. And I know that there's a lot of speakers that'll cut it down to two minutes. But unlike the ISD and the city council, you guys are paid pretty annually. They, you know, so I think you can stand, like Simmons said, and Simmons, that, you know, you can stand listening. I mean, it's only been a couple of times I've noticed since I've been speaking that the thing, there were a lot of speakers and it lasted well into the, you know, afternoon. And when that case happened, that means there was a lot of people coming for the first time to speak and they should get to speak. You know, cutting it down to two minutes is not egregious, but then cutting it down to one, then it really is. I mean, it's maybe not constitutional, you know, but it's, you know, it's, people want to speak and giving them enough time to speak is important. And I don't think it's enough of an inconvenience to have this policy.
Thank you. Following Ms. Geiger, we have Harriet Harrell.
My name is Dorie Graver, and although I am a member of the Chief of Justice Network, my words are not homing. I read all of the new proposed rules of decorum and want to ask, if it really requiring people who want to sign up to speak at Commissioner's Court, be changed to, quote, "All requests must be submitted online or in person by 9:00 a.m. the day of court meets." Some people cannot sign up online. They need to show in person. It is not feasible for some people to come downtown twice as proposed rules require. A 9:00 a.m. deadline before the court meets for in-person forums and online forums will still give staff the power to make copies for each of the members of the court.
All right. Following Dr. Harrell, we have Carl Paul Marsh.
I'm Harriet Harrell, and one of the things that I appreciate about Commissioner's Court is its openness to citizens. We are welcome to come and to participate. We feel like we're partnering with you to make our county a better place. There is a policy or set of rules online now which allows a respectful relationship. This proposed policy changes that. Its tone is restricted and punitive. While the court communication specifically says the policy is to maximize citizen participation, it actually minimizes it. It makes it more difficult for potential speakers to sign up. It focuses on the way the county judge will limit speakers and choose his speech plan. And it puts the county judge, you, Judge O'Hare, not the policy, in the horrible position of being perceived negatively whatever the policy is acting. As far as disruptive action, which really rarely happens, I recognize that a serious disruption of court proceedings justifies corrective action. But this proposed policy needs to more clearly delineate what such disruption is. And for someone issued a criminal trespass, you have to appeal it to the Carroll County Sexually Oriented Business Board? Really? Now I understand that that board may be changed to deal only with individuals. My goodness, fast. Really like this thing. Don't let people think that you are deliberately demeaning them. As strongly as I can, I urge you to delay voting on this policy. I believe that you care about the citizens of Carroll County. So pay attention to this input that you're getting today. If you simply vote up or down today after the input that you're getting from the people in the county, it is a slap in the faces of all of us. You are hearing this citizen input, which should be a part of such a policy. Do not ignore it. Please move to table or delay a vote on this policy until you can treat this feedback with respect. There's no immediate urgency to change the current rule. Working, collaborating to revise it would be a huge move to create respect.
Following Ms. Paul Morris, we have Stacy Mello.
I'm in this part of the world, uh, I was sitting for, uh, I'm a little too frustrated to be here right now. I was just rushing to get over here. As a very working class person, you know, as Commissioner Simmons and many other people have already said, it takes time and effort at our days to show up here twice a month to try to talk some sense into all of you, all of us. And I think it's absolutely retaliation that's coming from you to hold here. Trying to pass these policies behind closed doors. Having no collaboration with any of your other commissioners, having no public input prior to this new proposed is absurd. Every single time we come to this meeting, we're trying our best to comply with our decorum policies, to try to urge you and move you in some way, but you have zero compassion for community. You have zero regard for the people who have died in our jails, for the people that are constantly being harassed by our sheriff. It's absurd. And even though this policy may pass today, you're still gonna show up. We're still gonna talk your ears off. We're still gonna keep you here because you're getting paid by our tax dollars to show up and to stay here and listen to what the heck we have to say. So regardless of how much time we have on the clock, we're gonna show up and we're gonna make our voices heard and you're gonna sit down and listen to us over the next two years. And hopefully by then, we'll have you out of here.
Yeah. Following Ms. Mello, we have Reed Dills.
Okay, hello, Court. I'm here. I'm one of the people, one of your constituents who took off work, sat in traffic, paid for parking to be here. And I think it's really ridiculous, to use your word, Judge O'Hare, that you are telling me that that sacrifice is only worth, in some cases, one minute of your time. Is that, is that what you're telling me? Okay. So you expect me to summarize everything that I have to say, in some cases, in one minute? Judge O'Hare, I would like to ask you, when you were just giving your whole spiel about why you're in support of these guidelines, you think you could have done that in one minute? What about 30? That's apparently what we got right now. We can get it in three? Okay. I'll answer it. No, I don't think you could have. It was way more than three minutes that you had. But for some reason, you want to further restrict the time that we have to speak to you all. And in some instances, this is the only place that your constituents have to speak to you. Because some of you are very involved in your community. I'm looking at you, Commissioner Kraus. In past election cycles, you were nowhere to be found in the community. I think you were a little too busy getting books. So I think some people probably need as much time with you as possible to get their point across and make their needs heard. Okay? So, all that to say, I think that that timeline is absolutely ridiculous. Secondly, this decorum guideline states that Judge O'Hare would be free to cut off people whenever he feels like it, at his own discretion. So now not only do you have three minutes or less to speak, now Judge O'Hare, you can cut off anyone, really, really, at your own discretion, right? So if someone says something that you do not like, you have the power to silence anyone. Does that remind anybody of a certain type of leadership style? Anyone from the court from helping with that? Okay. Gotcha. So, all that to say, if you are not able to sit there for three measly minutes, which is all we have right now to speak to you, you should just not do that. And portion up the seat to somebody who is willing to sit there and listen to their constituents. Because please remember that it is your constituents who voted you into the seats that you're in right now. It is your constituents that can vote you out. So please stop wasting time trying to silence them. Thank you.
If you do it again, you'll be removed. So following Ms. Bills, we have Bishop Harper.
I have repealed the proposed policy and find all provisions to be unacceptable and intended to inhibit public presentations before the court. The time limit for speakers should not be reduced below three minutes. If speakers take the time to sign up and come to speak at the meeting, sitting through literally hours of county business and paying at least $10 to power, they should be given no less than three minutes of the commissioner's time. The deadline for submission of the public comment form should be 9:00 a.m. the day of the meeting, leaving at least an hour for staff to get the forms of the presiding officer. I will note that first come, first served has never been followed in this courtroom in the timeline of coming to speak. For instance, I signed up yesterday to speak and my son Charles signed up this morning and he has already been called to the podium. So that one doesn't fly. I also ask that the forms that you need to fill out to speak, accept auto scale input. It does give two instances, but you have to write out your name and your address and you fill them in all. An earlier deadline is appropriate for written comments on agenda items to allow distribution to commissioners and time to them to read the comments before they vote on the issue. Speaking orders should be strictly first come, first served. The presiding officer should not have the power to discriminate between speakers and select privileged individuals to have priority to speak ahead of others. No public forum should allow such violence. The presiding officer can apparently eject a speaker for any reason or no reason at his discretion. There should be some limits to this authority. I agree that clapping is disruptive and wastes time. For that reason, I suggest that clapping for proclamations, resolutions, and employee recognition be limited to the end of the presentation. The presiding officer can ask that applause be held until attendings are given a signal to clap at the completion of the particular ceremony. In addition to my comments on decorum, I ask that you return the benches to the hallway outside the courtroom. They provide the important assistance to speakers call from the overflow room and waiting for their time at the podium, as well as a place to sit for various reasons for people who have taken time from their day to visit the court.
Thank you. Please remove.
Ms. Bills, you're absolutely right. I signed up.
We are in depth.
How dare people clap? It's a, it's a serious crime, clapping.
Ms. Bills, you're absolutely right. I signed up late Friday night, Thursday morning, and you spoke before I gave.
I have not spoken yet.
The background of this policy says that intent of this policy is to ensure maximum citizen participation. Please, sirs and ma'am, do not kiss on my leg and tell me it's raining. My parents did not say that I was a United States Marine. They didn't even say I was in the military. They used to tell their friends I was in service. As a United States Marine, I was obligated as a servant. Whatever praiseness the Marines ordered me to do, I did it as a servant because the mission was always more important than the Marine. Carroll County average salary is sixty, minimum salary is $69,160, which is 59% higher than the country's average. With that, we pay you people a whole lot of money to pretend to listen to us for three minutes. This is not China. No one appointed you to this position. You chose this position. If you want the position, indulge three minutes to listen to your constituents. The Supreme Court has said that municipalities have authority to set rules for conduct and code of conduct in decorum. However, it must be equally applied. Brandon Berg versus Ohio, 1969, the Supreme Court ruled that the government cannot punish and flundatory speech unless it is likely to incite and imminent lawless action. Texas v. Johnson, 1989, the court held that burning of a flag is a form of symbolic speech, by the way, which I hate. But if I could burn a whole flag, but I cannot speak for three minutes, is a problem. The second executive order that presented Trump signed was restoring freedom of speech and ending government censorship. The purpose of the order was the first amendment of the Constitution of the United States. It meant essential that, it meant essential that our republic enshrined the rights of American people to speak freely and publicly without government interference. I used to come here long ago. Sometime I was the only speaker. Then it got to me this. You must ask yourself, how did it get to me this? And why is it this? A little sensitive, but dictative shit in this court.
Robert Van. Following Mr. Van, we have Gerald Jackman.
Thank you, Judge O'Hare. I just have, I've heard a lot of suggestions for, for modifying this, this policy change that you're looking at now. And I just have a couple of things. I'd like to ask some questions. Could I add something like, to five or more verified attendees wishing to speak on the same topic agreed, let one speaker speak for that group. That speaker should be permitted to speak for up to five minutes on that topic. This would seem to be a lucky speed-up testimony to take less time for one speaker to go forward and be recognized than for five or more. A similar procedure was being followed in New York City. It got some victims out there for a number of years, but they were maybe had ten speakers and one speaker could speak for them for extended period of time. On the public comments ones, I think other folks have pretty well covered this. Five o'clock really is unrealistic because many people work, many people have difficult beginning that are fourteen, twelve o'clock. I think, I think it really isn't realistic. And that needs to be backed off. Several folks have suggested nine o'clock morning. I would suggest perhaps start a bit of this if you can lay a part. But sometime, sometime the warning of the other course or the folks that are unable to just do the, do the online forms early coming in and actually coming for a time or two. Those would be my suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Combs.
Thank you, Commissioner, and Mr. Jack, the prosecutor. Would you hear me?
Yes.
There is one request from Mr. Kraus that we be specific about the kinds of violations that you mentioned. So I want to do that for you. It begins with the fact that the federal, the United States Constitution protects the rights of free speech in public forum, in designated public forum. When state law sets a governmental league and demands that the people have the right to speak in that meeting, state law has left to create a public forum. You create the topic on which free speech is created when you set an agenda. So am I right to tell you today what my complaints are against this policy? It's protected by the First Amendment to the United States and is protected by the Oklahoma Repeal Act. Section 501, section 551, for the number of seven E of the Texas Open Media Act provides that. A governmental body, this one, may not prohibit public criticism of the governmental body, including criticism of any act, omission, housing, procedure, or rule, or statute. The rules now afford you to not protect my right to criticize or ban governmental action. The page three of your rules, the prohibited on that includes, first one was asked, impertinent was always remarked. The problem is, what's impertinent? Is it impertinent for me, Judge O'Hare, to stand before you and say that the rules now afford this court give you power to dismiss me from this meeting? Judge, because I criticize you, that fits with me. The specific part of the rules that is playing too broad and gives you too much power, statements, tend to comply with many parts of the constituents' rules that result in sanctions, including the non-limited to follow removal of the having judge or his high officer, temporary prohibition of commenting personally during court if you have had people removed for a period of six months. Simply because maybe something just pleased you. You can cancel the rest of my time, which you probably understand now. Or you can refer on the civil statutes or criminal charges as make the offer I started with.
Thank you. So that's all the folks we have signed up to speak. We have comments from the courtroom.
I signed up to speak, and I need to cut you off.
I did too.
The, so just to clarify this. I get handed a stack of papers. I don't go through the papers. I don't sort through the papers. And I would only assume, but I don't know this because I've never checked, the stack of papers that I guess is in the exact same order, they are in.
I signed up to speak, and you need to cut me off.
Do not disrupt the meeting. So I would agree with people who have said, I signed up here, and then this one signed up later. I would agree, it should come in the order. I don't believe anyone has ever brought that to my attention or have, certainly don't remember. I've never heard anyone up here talk about it. But, but I'm in full agreement, and I don't think you have to put that necessarily in policy. You can direct the staff, put it in the order. Whether you agree with it or you don't, part of the issue they run into is these things happen literally every meeting where they didn't get this one in the pile. I don't know why they didn't get it in the pile. I don't form the pile, I'm going to hear form the pile. I don't know why it didn't come through. Sometimes it's because people think they signed up and signed up for a different item. Sometimes they sign up for public comment, and they don't sign up for the specific agenda item. There is no effort from anyone here to be included, and there is no effort from county administration to pick some speaker and throw them out. So do they make mistakes? I'm sure they do. But there's not an intentional effort to stop you, sir, or you from talking. So the, if you will tell me your names.
CJ Grisham.
If you signed up in the public comment portion.
CJ Grisham, Judge.
So we've got you down for speaking or non-agenda items where you did not list the agenda item.
Yeah, I listed three on the form. On the online form.
So I see your form. It does list, it says agenda item number sixteen. What is agenda item number sixteen? I'm asking you on that. So here, here we get into that. Not that anybody wants tears all to flush out, but... So here's where we run into the, if, if the form wasn't filled out correctly. And then I say, okay, well, you can go. All right, well, then now I'm allowing somebody special privileges. And so I try to enforce it uniformly without regard to anything and make sure it's fair. Some of you brought up some things while they're looking. It gives me the power to carry out. I don't like what you're saying. Never done that ever. I'm planning to ever do that. I have removed people that didn't stop talking, and they kept going forever. I've removed people that scream and yell, which I think you do, and try to scream and yell in any courtroom in America, and you'll be removed also. This is kind of a... Do we know what agenda item number sixteen is?
That's not what the whole question is. I think question is agenda item sixteen is not a purpose.
Good. Okay, tell me your name.
Judge Hunter, I need to ask you on some comments. I might have to wait, so I thought you were going to tell me.
So if you're in public comment, I'm not going to call you now. I see his form, and his form says, "Agenda item number sixteen subject matters jail deaths and TCSSO bullying, violence, authoritarianism, and abuse of the court." Did you fill out more than one?
I did not, Judge, but I'll just...
So I would tell you that this is not under that topic. So I'm not going to have to speak on that topic.
Of course.
So those are the speakers' statements. Comments from the courtroom.
Yes, I'd, I'd like to thank especially those with legal background for setting up that commission process question to which actions were advised, which is the first thing. And really prohibiting some, some people from clapping is a violation. These people who come down here regularly have been so conditioned, if not trained, if not their minds enslaved, to last minute thought that people clapping like this because they were too afraid to express themselves or fear of getting kicked out of their condition of court or their building, talking to their elected officials. If clapping is an issue, we clap for nothing. Nothing. No problemations, no humming vets. My son is a Marine captain. We clap for nothing. One person in this court should not get to pick and choose what the expression, form of expression should be. And we do get the same stack. That is exactly how I know that he has taken speakers down the court.
I most certainly have, you absolutely have. I most certainly have. I, I, I point to the public, anyone over there, do you remember the meeting after the meeting when you told me to shut up?
We had, we had overflow.
I never told you to shut up. That's another misstatement of facts, which is all you speak when you talk.
Overflow rooms of people. And I was keeping up. And everybody that signed up in support of you.
Don't worry, I'll still be able to speak during public comments.
So...
I just have to wait longer, that's all.
So it's easy for me to keep up. It's easier to keep up. So thank you, real folks, for coming up here to help answer the question about personal violations. And thank you all for coming. Unfortunately, they're not, they're not going to listen. Several people have texted and asked, does this have a chance of being close come? And I've been honest with you, I'm going to back to tell you no. These, these two gentlemen will follow right on.
I, I would say, there were a lot of legal comments made today, but nothing that I heard alleged a specific violation of constitutional law.
That's because I wasn't allowed to speak.
But I know she's probably very aware that court after court has said, even in a designated public forum, there are reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions that an entity can put on to make sure that things go the way that it needs to go. So again, I've not heard any allegation, any specific provision from the Constitution that...
That's because I wasn't allowed to speak.
Laugh all you want until somebody points that out. We, we have that. So I, I appreciate y'all being here and expressing your viewpoint. I really do. So thank you for that. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, please cast your votes. All right, that's the three.
Well, Republicans passed that, by the way. Republicans are the three that just voted to undermine the First Amendment, just so you know.
The very first item, housing assistance. All right, so we have a motion to approve the out-of-state travel request listed excluding housing assistance. All right, we have a motion to approve. We have a second. Any discussion? All right, please cast your votes. I'm passing two now. All right, now, I believe we are adding the D five to the agenda for consent. I remove this for consent for discussion. So you want, I don't mind it. So we briefly, we just approved during the consent agenda that item that should make, we had a minimum that a court reporter, I mean, sorry, an interpreter could build. We just approved the change to that where we removed the minimum. And what it was doing was somebody might come and show up for 15 minutes. They, in some instances, a little bit of contempt with, yes, pay me for 15 minutes or 30 minutes. But we have a minimum of two hours. We remove that. What number five is, is also involves court reporters, but we have two instances where I believe people were hired, if you will, or are asked to come be court reporter interpreters in criminal courts. But it was canceled, and so they charged an eight-hour minimum, which I don't believe I've ever seen that before here. And we may have passed it before, may, may have looked at it before, but I don't think I've ever seen an eight-hour minimum. So my understanding is a judge can say, yes, I'll sign this, but ultimately the commissioner's court has approval. So is that an accurate understanding of the law? Do you know? Okay. So I believe the law does not give, in this instance, final approval to the judge who ordered you can pay the whole eight hours. I don't know the specific circumstances of these two instances. But if this is a scenario where they were down at the courthouse at 9:00 AM for 8:00 AM time to arrive, there was a plea bargain that went on, took two hours, well, I certainly would say they should be paid for time. I don't know that I agree with that hours. If it's a scenario where they were called the day before at 4:00 PM and said, we, this thing resolved, we're going to need you, so then turn around and get a bill for eight hours, well, it's not, not even been eight hours if they had actually went forward. I just have a problem with that. I want to know what, what is the court thinking? Do we just go ahead and say, here, I need eight hours? Once you do that, now every single time there's a cancellation, I think people catch wind, eight hours, eight hours, eight hours, eight hours. And that's 800 bucks, from my understanding, on two different cases where they literally didn't come to work that day. So now fill me in, tell me what I got wrong or correct.
So in these two particular situations, I do not know if they showed up for any length of time. I would assume on these two, normally the reason you have to see this is we contact the judge and the lender to negotiate with them down so that we are not named bill. With the removal of this item from the policy, the specialty policy, and if there is a ready in the auditor's office and the budget office, they will continue to send anything that has a minimum or a cancellation on it to have amount on it so that we can continue to work with those department, with those vendors and the judges. You're correct, the judge does sign it, but I do not know on each particular situations if the, if they showed up at all or this week.
Court, if you have any thoughts on this. So if you vote to approve this, you're approving two people at this point, not knowing when they showed up or if they showed up. You're approving two people to receive $800 from the county. But I think also opening the door for that to happen.
Hey, guys, I'm going to cut this off for a second. I need to make a phone call real quick. I'll be back.